We're going to call our meeting to order. First item is invocation Rabbi Adel Plotkin of the Beit Torah Jewish Congregation.
He always doesn't want to cooperate. Good to be here. Honorable Mayor Skug, council members and staff, community members and friends. So here we are gathered together again as we welcome the summer with remembering the lessons of the past as we honor our fallen heroes on June 30th and with planning for enriching summer activities during our proclaimed Parks and Recreation Month. We pray that you, our leaders, will continue to meet the unique challenges of summer and pursue the best quality of life for all as well as access to summer activities for all. May you successfully meet the challenges to protect all those aspects of our lives that we care deeply about. With clear vision, wisdom and strength, may you move these causes forward for the benefit of all, children, adults, animals, environment, and so on, such as with the funding for the Humane Society. May you not shirk from making hard choices when needed, tempered by compassion and love, so that our community can be safe and secure with the needs of its people, animals, and resources being well provided for. May you be blessed with the ability to find common grounds in making these leadership decisions. In affirmation of these fervent prayers, let us each now, in his or her own way, agree as we say, "So may it be."
Thank you Rabbi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you Rabbi, and thank you for helping us on the pledge. We'll move on then to roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye. Councilmember Nye is absent this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here too.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you Diane. Okay, we'll move on then to Proclamations Fallen Heroes Day. Rick, you can join me. You have the copy Diane?
Yes I do Mayor. Fallen Heroes Day, June 30th, 2015. Whereas in June of 2013, the call came in for a major wildfire burning in the Yarner, Arizona area. Without question or hesitation, the firefighters responded. It was late afternoon on June 30th, 2013, that another more devastating call came reporting that nineteen Granite Mountain hotshot firefighters had lost their lives. Seven of these first responders were veterans, and whereas the area communities mourned this great loss and poured out their generosity upon the families and friends of the lost heroes. As we reflect upon that day, the memories of the nineteen fallen heroes who gave the ultimate sacrifice are forever etched in our hearts. And whereas the firefighters, police, military, regardless of uniform, are optimistic and enthusiastic, individualistic, and imaginative, and during difficult times, they extend their thinking beyond the obvious, motivate themselves to stay solid, positive, and build up their strengths. They understand the great risks and the real possibility of sacrificing life and limb as they act in the best interests of and for their country, community, and their families. And where it is with much gratitude that we acknowledge and give thanks to all of our uniformed first responders, firefighters, police, or military who stand ready to serve the people. When a call comes, action becomes the order of the moment, and vital services are stressful, demanding, and disciplined. These uniformed professionals are well-trained and gain fulfillment in keeping our country, communities, homes, businesses, schools, and streets safe. And whereas at this time of remembrance of that day and the mourning of the following heroes, the citizens of Prescott Valley extend their well wishes to families, friends, and the surrounding communities affected by the great loss of the nineteen Granite Mountain hotshots. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim June 30th as Fallen Heroes Day and urge all residents of the Prescott Valley to remember our fallen heroes with support, loyalty, and patriotism to the symbolism of the uniform.
Thank you Diane. Firefighters, who's going to receive it? There we go. Come on up. Sorry I didn't call you before we came down here.
I just want to thank you on behalf of the town and the council for the great job that you and all of our other first responders do. It's a pleasure to have you with us. Thank you very much.
I don't have a 20-minute comment, but I will say that it's an honor to serve the citizens in the town of Prescott Valley as well as the surrounding communities, and we just give our word and our oath continuously that we will continue to serve and train and perform up to the standards that the citizens of Prescott Valley expect. Thank you very much.
Now this is Battalion Chief Crowthers. Do I pronounce it right? Good. Thank you again for your service. Keep up the good work. Appreciate that. Okay, next we have Parks and Recreation Month. Diane, do you have it? And who's going to receive that?
Yes we do Mayor.
Come on up.
Parks and Recreation Month, July 2015. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Prescott Valley, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically challenged, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all of our citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now I therefore, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and call upon park and recreation supporters to join us in recognizing the importance of our nation's parks and recreation facilities, and encourage all citizens to enjoy all the recreation activities available in their community.
Thank you Diane. Now we're going to have you introduce yourself.
I'm Elaine Fallman. I'm one of the commissioners for the Parks and Recreation Commission. It is truly my honor to accept this for the commission and for the town. The Parks and Recreation Department does an outstanding job for all of the parks, no matter how bad the economy was. We kept them open, and we are grateful to have this proclamation and to accept it and to keep on doing our duty for the citizens of the town.
Well, we're very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department, and we're very thankful for the commission for the great job that you folks do. So thank you again. Now if I'm correct, we have 25 parks that you maintain, plus pending Bob Edwards Park. We appreciate the work you do and appreciate your commission.
And we do it with a skeleton crew. Get that in. I see the business managers here, so.
They do an excellent job. We're very proud of our Parks Department, very part of the people who serve us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor.
This next one says Certificate of Appreciation, but it's a plaque of appreciation. Do you have any comments Diane?
No, I don't Mayor.
And where's the... There we go. Brian? Bruce, Buzz, come on up. And bring here the special ones with you.
She's not coming?
Come on up. Some people are real bashful. And we're going to give you the honor of being the first one to speak. Linda?
Twenty minutes. Okay. We're just very proud of Buzz being on the Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm his wife.
I've enjoyed the time on the commission. I've put in a few years, and it's been a joy to work with, meet so many people, a lot of department heads, a lot of the council members. I leave you in good hands with Brian and his staff. You have a very dedicated and strong commission, and it's just been a joy, and I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be able to put so many years on this commission. I have a new career starting now as grandfather. My two-month-old grandson is here tonight. He's sleeping, but that's not because it's a boring meeting. He's just got fed. But that's the new career I'm taking upon, and I didn't think I was going to have the time to dedicate to the commission, so I'm leaving it open. I know you'll find another strong commissioner, and with the leadership they have and that, things are going to go well. And I would like to just say that please keep my parks up because the grandson and I, within a few short months, are going to be terrorizing all of your parks.
And Buzz, you look very grandfatherly. Now Linda looks too young.
Right.
That's right.
That's okay. You had your time sir.
You're doing good. Well, we do. And it's pretty much all for your benefit here Buzz. I know about eight years ago Buzz introduced himself to me as I was coming on board as the new director for the department, as well as to many other commissioners. For those that you may not be aware of it, Buzz let us know that he was a team member of the '84 Olympic swim team, and that's how we were introduced to Buzz during his time and that. And so with that being said, he has a great sense of humor, and it has shown tremendously over the years. But most definitely Buzz has been an advocate for parks and recreation for a number of years here with us. Because of his background in swimming, of course, Mountain Valley Splash has been a very significant part of his time with us. Also due to his swimming prowess, he's been a tremendous polar bear swimmer over the years, diving right into the cold, deep waters of the pool that we have. And he has done a tremendous job, not only at the pool, but throughout our entire system, enriching it, making it better, expanding the services and opportunities that are found there in doing these things. As he is a tremendous advocate in all avenues of parks and recreational services for the community, Buzz has been the beginning of our Tree City USA community, which we're very, very proud of, that we've been successfully for a decade now under his leadership, as then well five years with Growth Award, where we have been expanding our services and enriching our community through natural beauty. Buzz is definitely an advocate for youth services and activities. He has been with us for literally every single extravaganza, festival, event, and activity that the department has produced over the years. He has helped grow our recreational services. This is one of our newest playgrounds that was installed just this past year over at Tonto North Park. He is a dedicated hockey fan coming from South Dakota. My apologies, North Dakota. Yeah, it's even colder up there, so. And keeps the ice well intact. He supported the Sun Dogs and most definitely supported and participated in our Open Skate Program over at the Event Center. During his tenure, several developments have taken place, whether it be the ballfields, lighting systems, expansions of our park systems, our skate park. I think that's you doing one of those gnarly turns and rides up there Buzz. Yeah, just a year or two ago when we were opening that up. But definitely the growth and enhancement of Mountain Valley Park through its many different phases of growth out there, and betterment for the community and expansion of those services. Most recently, we completed a park project over at Antelope Park. Buzz's vision was highly involved through this process. That was a before photo, and this is a today photo of that growth and development. And we're actually going to begin the process of replacing that program, our playground system there, and expanding it hopefully through grant development. As I mentioned before, Buzz has strongly been an advocate for youth activities and sports. He's been part of our Pump Pass and Kick Program via the NFL. He has seen a state champion come through that program, as well as many regional champions through that development, enriching children's lives and their families. He's created awe and splendor throughout our system. He has been a participant in its activities and services that are available. And Buzz, I can't say thank you enough. You've been a tremendous gentleman, and you have definitely created a future for our community in supporting of our staff, as that is one of our newest team members, if you will, with Mr. Jason and his daughter. So thank you very much sir for all your help and time and commitment over 19 years to this community. Thank you.
Rick, any comments?
Brian touched on just about anything that could be said. However, I believe there may be someone in the audience that would like to come up and say something. Is that correct? Now's the time.
We're going to need a police officer down here.
Good evening Mayor and council and staff, and Buzz and Linda. Many of you know me, don't you? Long before my current life, which is meander, I guess now, traveler, I served on the council for many years. Prior to that though, I served on the Parks and Rec Commission, and I served with Buzz. And that goes back 18 years now. And so I started out serving on Parks and Rec Commission with Buzz Gummer. And I just, I know the kind of dedication that Buzz has towards our community, and how much he cares about every element about this community. And you have to in order to stick with something for 18 years, see the progression and all of the changes that have gone on, and through good times and bad times. And I think Elaine mentioned that, so. When you have to go through hard times, and you still make things work, and you still progress forward with that, it says an awfully lot about dedication and making things work. So I wanted to just come tonight and say congratulations, and we are enriched because of your service. Thank you very much.
Counsel, any comments? Anyone? Marty?
How you do. Buzz, anybody who has served on the Parks and Rec Commission for as long as you did and has contributed as much as you do, I think that's tremendous. I wish you well in your new position as grandpa and grandma. So I know you're looking forward to it. It's going to be a great adventure to you, and thank you for your service. It's been greatly appreciated by everybody in the town, and anybody who's ever set foot in one of our parks knows the work that goes into it. So thanks again.
Thank you. Mary?
I just want to thank you. I had some time to be able to work with you, and it was a great opportunity, and I had no idea all that you had done. I only know what I've known recently, and so just appreciate everything and your heartfelt desire to keep our parks going, and we'll try to keep going with that process. And we'll reach out to you if you have any questions. I hope you don't mind.
Thank you Mary. Mike, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you. I think we'll be lost without your vision, but I know you'll be there to help us along with any advice. And I think you've put your mark on the town. Because I have always felt that Parks and Rec is really the face of the community. And one thing I think is that parks really tell a lot about the community. So we appreciate your commitment and all those long hours and years that you've put in, and we'll miss you, we'll lose, I think, or feel the loss of your involvement. And I knew that our director had somebody behind him for all the things that we find as far as events and other things through the Park and Rec Department. So we appreciate your commitment. Good luck in your endeavor as a grandfather, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the parks now and then. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, Buzz, I've got a question for you. How many Parks and Rec directors did you train?
And I can't remember Larry. Well, you were one.
I only did Parks maintenance for a while.
You were very helpful at the beginning when I came on. We worked closely together with Public Works and Parks to make things happen back in the day. I think it was six?
Yeah, that's about right. Were you on the Parks and Rec Commission when we still had the horse corrals of Mountain Valley Park, or did you come on right afterwards?
Right after. Right after the pool was completed.
Oh, you lucky rascal.
Yes Cindy.
Yeah, that was a real fight. But just as a source of personal pride, take a look at all those parks that we now have and the kind of shape they're in, with the amenities they have now, because it was pretty Spartan when you started. So thank you for all your service and doing a good job of bringing that whole program along. It's well done, and you should be proud of that.
Thank you very much.
As we want to wish you well as you proceed into being grandfather, whatever you do, don't spoil that little one, okay?
Too late.
Too late. It's already started. With that, we have a plaque for the town of Prescott Valley presented to Buzz Gummer in appreciation of nineteen years of dedicated service on the Parks and Recreation Commission, November 1996 through June 2015. Buzz, thank you so much. Linda, thank you for letting him serve with us. Really, any more comments Linda?
No, that's it.
See, we're not going to get that 20 minutes out of her. Okay. Good.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Pardon?
It says recess. What's that?
That's what Mr. Witty called for, was a brief recess.
Mr. Witty, did he really want to have a brief recess? We've done it. Okay, good. Well then we'll just continue on. Comments and communications? We've already had one comment, that's from Mr. Flannery, who was on town council for many, many years, and has served our community for a lot of stuff. Now, believe it or not, he's retired, but he's still serving. So thank you Mike, we appreciate your being here. Any other comments? Anyone? None? Okay, if there's no comments, then we'll continue on to the number 11, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. This includes the approval of June 4th and 11th, 2015 Work Study and Council Meetings Minute, approving a new Series 12 liquor license application for Chipotle, I guess it's pronounced, a Mexican grill located at 5791 East State Route 69, HJ Lukowicz applicant. C is approving a Series 9 liquor license, and Series 9 S sampling application for Safeway Incorporated, located at 7720 East State Route 69. Andrea D. Lukowitz, and apparently they're related parties, applicant. D is authorizing the mayor in his absence to sign Resolution Number 1921, approving the abandonment of a utility east end between 8031 Dana Drive and 8030 John Court. E is approving the purchase of a Barracuda backup appliance and cloud storage from Information Technology Capital Account during fiscal year 2015 and 16, in a total amount of approximately $17,255. N F is approving a service agreement with Dectronics in the amount of $19,526.31 for the Mountain Valley Park amphitheater scoreboard retrofit. E is approving the 100 Club of Arizona Safety Enhancement stipend amount in the amount of $4,000. H, again, accepting the Arizona Automotive Theft Authority Award, professional training 2015-16, public awareness grant in the amount of $1,105.75. I is accepting a Arizona Automobile Theft Authority, AATA, VIN etching equipment supplies 2015-16, public awareness grant in the amount of $13.91. Now you notice there's three grants in a row there. J is approving the confidentiality agreement with Fane Signature Group. A K is our department reports, our financial reports, investment reports, and approving county. Anybody want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second.
And we have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote Diane? And that one passes. Thank you. Okay, now we move on to number 11, Old Business. Second reading by title only in consideration of the passage of Ordinance Number 806, amending Town Code 10-01-030, fireworks. Any comments on that Larry? Anything? We've studied this one quite a bit, and it's just a matter of complying with state, new state laws. And sometimes I wish they wouldn't make laws, but they do. Any other comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion.
The motions, Mike, Marty?
I'll motion to read Ordinance Number 806 for a second reading on fireworks for, it's not coming up anyway. There's nothing coming up.
With that, I'll just ask the town clerk to read Ordinance Number 806 by title only for a second reading. Diane?
Ordinance Number 806. An ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Section 10-01-030, fireworks declared by Resolution Number 1919 to be a public record, which amends Section 10-01-030, fireworks in Article 10-01 offenses, in Chapter 10 offenses of the Town Code, to allow the sale, possession, and use within the town of permissible consumer fireworks as defined by Arizona Revised Statute, Section 36-1601, only on certain dates specified by law, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in... in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, I'll ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote? And that passes. This is another case of a lobbying group that succeeded in getting the state to over run us, overruled our cities and towns. We go on to number 12. New business for review, comment, and/or possible action. 12A, consideration of appointing council member Rick Anderson as vice mayor to serve at the pleasure of the council. Any comments? Larry, any comments?
Ivan?
The mayor and council, as you're well aware, yearly you consider electing or appointing a new vice mayor. This is a policy that you started about eight or nine years ago. Before that, there really was no policy in place to review the vice mayor position and there had been some longstanding vice mayors for a number of years and council at that time grappled with the issue of an annual process. And so, last week during the work study, there were ballots delivered to you by the town clerk and the town clerk tabulated those and you had selected at that point in time Rick Anderson as the vice mayor for fiscal year 1516, starting July 1, which is a few days away. And so, if you want to confirm that vote, you certainly are entitled to do that with this action.
Thank you. This will be Rick's second time if he's confirmed. The vice mayor for the past two years has been Laura Lee Nye and she's done an outstanding job. She, it's hard to, I know it's hard for the council to realize how much the vice mayor does and how much they help. Any more comments? Mary?
Oh, no, sir.
Oh, no comments? Any other comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion. Consideration of appointing council member Rick Anderson as vice mayor to serve at the pleasure of the council.
Motion seconded, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion in a second, would you set the vote? Somehow my screen didn't do it.
And mine went away too. I don't have anything.
Diane, what do we do? Oh, there we go. Mary was a mover, made a motion. Marty seconded.
Okay, there we go.
Very worked. Rick, I want to congratulate you. Thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Okay, then we'll move on to B. Consideration of appointing Keith Trevini to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Rick, you have any comments?
I do. Give me just a moment, please, to get where I need to be here. I will get there.
There you are, Rick.
That sounds working.
Oh. Thank you.
Didn't get anything to work?
Okay. On June 30, 2015, Kevin Trevani's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Kevin was first appointed to the partial term on this board December 4, 2014, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and council members Mary Mallory and myself are recommending the appointment, a reappointment of Kevin Trevini for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018 by electronic vote.
Any comments?
Just that, we do appreciate Kevin's service and appreciate that he would, they would like to do this again.
And I don't think Mr. Trevini is here. Am I missing?
No.
Anyone care to make more comments or a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Motion to reappointment Kevin Trevini to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to second a motion.
Okay, with a motion in a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes. Well, I want to thank Mr. Trevini for this. Okay, we move on then to C. Consideration of reappointing Frankie Gibbs or Gibson to the Arts and Cultures Commission. Any comments, Rick?
Yes, I do. Okay. On June 30, 2015, Frankie Gibson's term on the Arts and Culture Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Frankie was first appointed to a partial term on this board on January 13, 2011, and this reappointment will be her third consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, council members Mary Mallory, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Frankie Gibson for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018.
Thank you. Any comments, Mary?
Just that, we appreciate that. She's doing this again for us.
And I don't see Dr. Gibson in the audience. She said she'd be here or could be here, but she isn't. Okay, any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to reappoint Frankie Gibson to the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018. I'll second.
Okay, with a motion in a second, would you set the vote? And that passes. And again, we want to thank Dr. Gibson for her service. Next is D. Consideration of reappointing Lucila Mangels to the Library Board of Trustees. Rick, any comments?
Sure do. On June 30, 2015, Lucila Mangels' term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Lucila was first appointed to a partial term on this board January 10, 2013, and this reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, council members Mary Mallory, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Lucila for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018.
Anything else, Mary?
Oh, just that, again, we do appreciate the service. Without these people doing these services to the community, it'd be very difficult to get a lot of things that are done in this town that we live in. So, we do appreciate the volunteers and the commitment they make to making our community what it is today.
Thank you, Mary. Motion or discussion, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lucila Mangels to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2018 by electronic vote.
And I'll second that motion, Mayor.
We have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote? And that also passes. Is Lucila here? I don't think so. Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, we move on then to E. Public hearing. Proposed expenditure limitation and budget for fiscal year 2015-16. And now declare the public hearing open. Bill, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations, Vice Mayor, council members. Since this item was discussed pretty thoroughly at the budget work study and also at the adoption of the tentative budget, I was just gonna go ahead and answer any questions that you might have regarding the budget.
Bill, I'm pretty sure everybody would want to hear the whole thing again.
Would, if you want. You know, Larry, Larry told me, you know, to have my 20 slides ready to go just in case, so. So, it's really had council's discretion whether or not you want me to, actually, I did cut it back, so it's up to council to decide whether or not you want me to go through that.
Anybody want to hear the whole thing again?
Exciting presentation.
Actually, that was, that was the reason for the recess, but since we didn't take it, we won't have time, so I'm sorry.
Do you have time? Okay, I'll answer any questions that council might have or the public.
Anyone from the public here to comment? We're actually running a fairly tight budget and, believe it or not, the town is running 100% on revenues only. We're not borrowing a penny at all this year, so I think overall it's a very good budget. Yeah, go ahead, Rick, Marty, or Rick, Libby.
Well, I was gonna say, could you tell the public exactly what the total budget is this year?
For 2015-16, our level of appropriations are $75,618,793, which is up, I think, about 8% over last year. So, again, we are making some adjustments in the various funds, primarily in the general fund, but like you indicated, Mayor, we actually are balanced. We have a balanced budget in the general fund and so we have a lot of good projects, capital projects in store next fiscal year, so.
Okay. Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. Bill, the full budget is available to the public on our website, isn't it?
Yes, it is. We have the tentative budget has been out there and then either, it's either today or probably Monday, we'll have the final budget and all of the sign, once the signed resolutions are received by Lee, my department, we'll put the final budget, complete budget on our website for the public to review.
Good. Mary, you had a comment?
I just, I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that. Also, within that budget, we were able to hire on five new officers along with getting some vehicles, so it helps our community, you know, it keeps us safer and everything that we do in this budget always goes back into the community and the people that live here.
Yes. Thank you, Mary. Larry?
Yeah, Mayor and council, we would be remiss if we did not thank and appreciate truly the hard work that all of the department heads have done, the work that you have done analyzing all of the revenue streams and proposed expenditures, but most importantly, Bill and his staff at Management Services that has done another award-winning job this year, pulling together a budget that is a very sound budget, one that is very conservative, but yet meets the service needs of the community. But hats off to Bill and his team, Lee Albritton and everybody else, I believe Katie as well, who's in the audience. They all pitched in to put this together and it's important to note that this process starts in November with the very first budget retreat that you're involved in. And so, this brings a very long process, a very deliberative process, to a conclusion and then we turn right around and start again in November.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the employees and the department heads as well because we did start last year and it's been, I think, a pretty rigorous process and I always appreciate it because we get to see the details of what makes our town run and we've just, we're just now getting over, I think, our deep recession and this is a time where we've been able to, I think, invest in things that we haven't been able to do in the last seven years. So, I think everybody's looking forward to a very successful year and I think our budget as far as the balanced budget reflects that, that we're trying to be responsible, yet look at those things that we need that will help our community like the police department. So, we appreciate all the department heads' help and your help as well. Thank you.
Katie, do you have anything to add? I think, Bill, you've done a good job. Public, have any comments, questions, anyone? This is a very important process, but I think we've, it's been handled very well and we've studied this thing till we're almost getting a little bit weary of it.
I agree with that.
Any other comments, Bill?
No.
If there's no questions, comments, then I would declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on then to F. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1922, adopting the town budget and expenditure limitation for 2015-2016. Any more comments or motions, anyone? Rick?
Mayor, I'll be glad to make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1922, adopting the fiscal year 2015-16 final expenditure limitation and budget for the town of Prescott Valley by electronic vote.
And I will second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion in a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that one passes. We're limited to what we can spend next year and I think that's perfectly all right. Okay, we move on to number G. Consideration of approving a new intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Revenue to provide for the uniform administration of licensing, collection, and auditing of town transaction privilege and use taxes. Now, this time, Katie, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Today, I'm bringing before you the IGA that we have proposed with the Department of Revenue. Basically, we have had one over the past, since we adopted the Model City Tax Code, they've always collected our tax for us. However, because of the recent state changes, they're, they had worked on a uniform IGA for all cities and towns in Arizona. That's why we're bringing this updated one to you today. It basically brings uniformity to the auditing process as well as confidentiality requirements and the department's ability to basically collect for all cities and towns. And this is going to be an IGA that would be effective for a year, but it'll automatically update each year after that unless either party chooses to renegotiate the terms. And with that, if any of you have any questions on this?
If anybody wonders what IGA means, you know, tell them.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Good. It's, this is another case where the state has simplified everything. The more they simplify the stuff, the harder it gets. Any other comments? Anyone? Marty?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Come on. Motion to approve the new intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue to provide for uniform administration, licensing, collection, and auditing of town transaction privilege and use taxes by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, be happy to second a motion.
Thank you. We have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote? And that passes. And thank you, Katie. We move on to H. Consideration of approving a five-year agreement with CH2M Hill-OMI in the amount of $5,194,578.93 for utilities, operation, maintenance, and management services. Neil, Mark, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we had a discussion a number of months ago about what we were gonna do with the contract because it expires this year at the end of this month and based on your direction, we have provided you now with a new contract for the next five years. You agreed that we were not going to put this thing out for bid or for competition and I think that's largely due to the level of service that we've been receiving from OMI and, you know, the good services that we've received. Anyway, so what you have in front of you is a five-year contract and as you're aware, annually, we do negotiate what the compensation for the services are and what the different tasks that we require. Sometimes we change the scope of work a little bit, we add things or we change things. So, we do that annually, but this basically provides the contract that's gonna cover us for the next five years. There are a number of people in the audience from CH2M Hill and so if you wanted to call them up here and talk to them, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up here and answer any questions or talk about anything you'd like. And you may want to ask them about their rebranding that they just did not too long ago. And so, I think, I don't know, Mark, if you have anything you want to say real quick? Okay, so.
No comments, Mark?
Yeah. Bill? Bill says I'm long-winded. I'm sorry. I just want to acknowledge some of the, some of the things that we've actually accomplished. I know in talking with Larry when we first discussed this option of not competing the contract based on performance, you realize in '08, we've run eight years, seven, almost eight years.
Realize in '08, we've run eight years, seven, almost eight years, and one of the pieces you all got to see was their increase in somewhat pain-sharing, gain-sharing through the tough times, and I think their overall increase cumulative from '08 till today, before approving this budget or this increase, was just under six percent over a seven-year period, so I think we all know. It's obviously outstanding for us and shows good leadership with them and partnering with us to work through tough times and hopefully work through the good times with us as well. A lot of technology advancements, especially in the last seven or eight years, they've supported us on, and we actually couldn't do it without any of them, and when I look back and look at some of the staff, I think every time we come up annually, you know, the historical knowledge and just some of the skills that we tap into, because they stay with us, they've been with us for a long time, is, you know, just super valuable, and I know you all know that, because you've heard Neil up here as well, I, on a lot of the different projects, and it's because of them and what they do that, you know, we're able to be successful and keep advancing forward, so I want to thank all of them, and I'd like to ask any of them, or however you would.
Introduce them if you would.
I'd like to have all of them come down, that'd be great, and at least introduce them, Phil. That would be nice.
Juan, lead the troops. Who's gonna do the introduction? Do you know him all, Mark?
I do.
Oh, great, introduce.
I guess we'll let Mr. Monta go first, Juan.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to say thank you for this. It's been a great eight years that I've been coming here and seeing you guys every year, and I look forward to the next five and hopefully even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Paul Cornejo's our project manager, he just recently came on board about a year ago.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Manager, I'd like to sincerely thank you on behalf of CH2M Hill and its employees who live here in Prescott Valley. It's been a pleasure serving you, and we look forward to serving you for the next five years. I'd like to especially thank Mr. Mark Kirian and Neil Wadsworth for their continued support as well. We continually work with them in all the issues that may come up, on daily operations, they do a great job, there's a lot of communication between us on a daily basis, and they make sure to keep us in line and well, in line as well, of course, and just like to thank you, we will continue our commitment to provide the town of Prescott Valley and its citizens with continued safe and reliable drinking water and wastewater services, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next in line's gonna be Shane. Shane does our, all of our distribution operations for us.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity for additional five more years, it's been a pleasure, the time I've served here in the town of Prescott Valley, don't plan on being anywhere else, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up's Jamie. Jamie's been with us a long time. Jamie, how long?
Ten years.
Yeah, ten years. Mechanics, data, electrical, he's done a little bit of everything, he's moved through the whole system.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Like Mark said, have really enjoyed the last ten years and very much looking for the next five. Appreciate everything, thank you.
Ron Stillwell's next. He came to us about, what, four years ago, Ron? He's in a supervisory role over the plant operations, as well, the water operations. Come on, Ron. He comes to us from Williams, Arizona.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor, Council, appreciate the support and renewing the contract. It's a pleasure working with Mark and Neil, they're top-notch, I've been all over the state of Arizona, and believe me, they're top-notch guys you got working for you here. We'll do our best to keep everything in compliance with state and federal laws, regulations. Thanks.
Next up, Ben Messer. Ben, how long, seven years?
Five.
Well, it seems like seven, it's been a long time. He's done a good job. He takes care of our wastewater operations down at the plant.
Council, Mayor, we appreciate everything that you guys do to support us, including Mark and Neil, and all your support as well, and we're just happy to be here and do our jobs and continue to do them for another five years.
Thank you.
Next up is Jim Kendall. Jim, how many years, or is it over eleven, right? Yeah. Jim's kind of our silent hero here. He does all the blue stakes and keeps us safe, does all of that, he does a lot of other, he does safety for the team here, CH as well, but his role probably maybe isn't as visible, but it's super valuable. How many locations did you complete this year? Do you remember what the number was?
You know what, he'll have to use the microphone. In order for the TV audience to hear it.
Come on, Jim.
The microphone.
Say your piece, thanks, man.
Mayor, Council, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve this community, I'm excited that we're gonna continue to do so, I just want to thank you for it all, and this community is just absolutely awesome, so thank you, folks.
So, next up are the corporate officials from CH that have come down to be a part of this, is Gary Young and Andy Appleton. I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna do the position thing, I know one's western region and one is the, a bigger part of the United States as well, international, but I'd like both you guys to come up and say it, Ben.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, it's really been a pleasure, I mean, this whole trans partnership, I'd like to say, has been a great joy. I've been here for the last, about, year over direct, providing supports and assistance to the team, and previously in supporting them on a technical basis, but what I see is a pure partnership, an extension of the city, is what we always try to achieve, and it is truly that partnership. We really enjoy Mark and Neil's support and the whole city, that it's a long-term commitment for five years, and we look forward to delivering the service for you.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to add is I think it's a celebration of our commitment to safety and ethics and values, this team does that every day, they not only bring the service to the residents of the town, but they do it safely and with integrity, and there's nothing else that we would appreciate more than.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mark?
Unless you guys have any questions of Neil, all right?
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, I think we're getting a great deal, as far as our money's worth with this relationship. I think it's our approach to contract out for a lot of different types of services and projects, and I think this is one, is probably a model, and I say that because I think it's, the expertise they bring to the table, I think we appreciate quite a bit. It's seamless, I think it's hard to tell sometimes who's, who's town employees and who is not, you know, so everybody works with that same commitment, I think, and very responsive, I know that personally, that if there's an issue out there, they're out there right away, and as was mentioned before, excellent services, so I think, I'm looking forward to another five years, and I don't know, and the rebranding, if you consider changing your name, but I've always had an issue with this CMH Two Hill, but I know you're not, it's a tradition, and it's a name, and it's a brand, so we appreciate your partnership with the town of Prescott Valley.
Mayor?
Thanks, Mike.
You know, I just, I've been on the council now going on five years, and what I remember so well is that when we were going through some really rough times, you know, how you, how you guys were right there with us, and you are a part of this community, and you care about this community, and the relationship with you is one that is really, to me, almost irreplaceable, because you're right there with us on everything that we do, so you're there in the good, you're there in the bad, and we can count on you, and that matters a lot, so I really appreciate all that you do, and for you coming up here tonight, and looking forward to another great five years in keeping the community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick?
Thanks, Mayor.
It's interesting to me how all of you have come up here and been so humble and thanked us, and I guarantee you, it's us that should be thanking you, because you've made our job that much easier because of the good job that you've all done for us. Thank you very much. Marty?
Thanks, Richard.
I'm out on the streets on a fairly regular basis, and I'm always seeing your trucks and vehicles going out there and traveling, I've also done a couple of tours through the water process, the plant and everything, and everything works so well and so smooth, and it's nice that when I want a glass of water, it comes out of the tap, nice and clean, and, you know, I think that's the way it should be, so thank you for all you do, keep up the good work, and we look forward to another great five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. I think there's several points of concern or issue, if you will. One is, we have a continuity of service, and that's gonna save us money, believe me, if we tried changing, we would have some problems. The other is that they have served and saved us money, and I think that was right from the very beginning, the difference between having private enterprise do it and the municipal services, it's been a saving to us, so. Mark, you've done a great job. Neil, thank you for the job.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Gentlemen, we do appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, guys.
Keep up the good work. Anyone have a motion regarding this?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Rick, go ahead.
Motion to approve the agreement with CH2M Hill-OMI by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, be happy to second the motion.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that one passes. Gentlemen, you're in it for five more years, for sure. Okay, we move on to number J, I'm sorry, the I, rather, consideration of approving the purchase of eight new police vehicles, budget in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Chief, you're up.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Your consideration this evening is approving the purchase of eight new police vehicles. Seven of those vehicles will be provided to patrol, and will be fully marked patrol vehicles, one of those vehicles will be provided to our criminal investigation section for use by a detective. The RFA goes into a significant amount of detail as far as the costs, as well as the different intricate pieces when you build a police car, but first of all, the funding, I think, is important here, because five of these vehicles will be funded as the general fund, and three of them, because they account for growth in staffing, which Councilwoman Mallory alluded to earlier, is required, so we need three new vehicles to put five new police officers in, so those three vehicles will be paid for through development impact fees. One of the pieces of the patrol vehicles that I wanted to highlight was the fact that we are stepping forward a little bit in our technology. We are gonna be installing 4G modems, including hotspots in each of the vehicles, and we're gonna start using a tablet-based computer instead of the mounted computer in the vehicles, so that our personnel will be able to remove those computers from the vehicle and use them to gather evidence at crime scenes, for example, they can take pictures with them, they can make recordings with them, and then they can put them back into the vehicles, and then once they get back to the police station, they'll be able to download that data wirelessly to impound it as evidence. The wireless 4G modem will also greatly increase the speed at which we exchange data with the Prescott Regional Communication Center, and so the efficiency of our officers in the field will be greatly improved through that, improved IT package. I wanted to take a moment to thank Council and management profusely, eight vehicles I have not seen in my tenure with the Prescott Valley Police Department, so thank you very much for the Herculean effort, I'm sure, in approving this, and I look forward to any questions that you have.
Questions, anyone? Mayor?
I just want to tell you that I'm glad that we were able to get this going, and that we appreciate all that you and the department do, and how you're always out there making sure we're safe, and we are behind you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Just want you to know that.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick? Any other? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, too, I think that what we're asking for here is really essential as part of the tools that the police department brings to our community, especially in terms of response, and I know we have a lot of mileage on these cars, and it's just, I think, necessary to look at the needs and to replace vehicles as necessary over time, and so we're looking forward to upgrading our police department, not only in terms of personnel, but vehicles as well.
Thank you.
And we always, I think, enjoy the coverage and the response that we have, we feel very safe, and we appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you.
Larry, comment?
Just as a comment, Mayor and Council, and touched on already, this, you're making history this evening by this approval, we have never purchased this many vehicles at one time for the police department.
Thank you, Larry. What it is, is keeping up with the tiny, the population growth, also, we've got a pretty good record, because our crime rate has been going down for, what, seven years, I believe, consistent, and that's been true of ours, it's also true, and kind of a national trend, we want to keep that trend going.
Yes, sir.
So, anything else, Chief?
No, I'd just like to provide a quick thanks as well to Lieutenant Woods, Sergeant Pat Reese, Officer Matt Cahill, and Chris Giatri team at the police department, each of them performed a different function to create this request for council action, as well as to move us forward into the, into the next generation of information technology in our police vehicles.
Good. Any other questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, we're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of eight new vehicles, in the amount of approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars by electronic vote.
And I'd like to second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Chief, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We approve it. Thank you. Okay, we go on to J, consideration of approving the agreement with Yavapai Humane Society for an animal shelter, for animal shelter service in fiscal year 2015-16, in the amount of seventy thousand dollars added, six-twenty-three-fifteen. Chief?
Mayor and Council, for your consideration here is approval of a one-year contract with the Yavapai Humane Society. What this contract will do is provide a location for our animal control officers to take animals who need shelter, for whatever reason, they might be stray, they might have bitten someone, et cetera. It also provides an avenue for our citizens that choose to do so, to take animals directly to the shelter as well, if they happen to find a stray animal on the street, as well as owner surrenders. These services have increased in costs this year significantly, to put it frankly, and so we went through a long discussion with the Yavapai Humane Society, during which we elicited a lot of information through their director, Ed Bokes, and some of their staff at the Humane Society, and through that conversation, as well as the data gathered, I'm comfortable presenting this contract to you for consideration for the next year. I will tell you that we do plan, and actually have already set the first date, to sit down as Prescott Valley Police Department, the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, and the Prescott Police Department, in order to have discussion about next year's contract, as we will all be renewing at the same time at that point, to have discussions about some of the nuances of the contract and some of the data that we need to continue conversing about.
Other comments, questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think we are all concerned, at least I was, to see the increase in the shortfall that we incurred as a part of the contract, and I would appreciate, and I know we did a couple of years ago, had Mr. Box here to kind of go through the process of explaining the contract and the needs that they have, and as you're saying, I know we're gonna have that coming next year, and I think we would appreciate that as well, so we have a better idea of what the collaboration is between the police department, the sheriff, and the Humane Society, but.
Certainly.
I know it's a needed service in our community and worthwhile, and we just have to look at all the options, I guess, next year, when we look at all the partners that are involved with the provision of the service.
I agree. Thank you.
Other comments? This one, in a way, I'm surprised, it shouldn't have been, population is growing and more work there, and of course, costs are going up, so.
Yes, sir.
I think this is, this is agreeable. Any questions, comments, commotions, motions, emotions, anybody? Promotion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Have a motion, great.
Motion to approve the agreement with the Yavapai Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services in FY 2015-2016 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, be happy to second the motion.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And that one passes. Chief, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Now, we go on to number thirteen, comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance, any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to member any thereof. Such remarks shall be. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on future agenda. Gentlemen, you're up. Come on up. It's good to see you. Appreciate your being here. You'll give Diane your name so that she can...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Manager. My name is Russ Willis. I'm actually not a resident of Prescott Valley. I live in the city of Prescott. I'm here on behalf of a grassroots organization that has membership throughout the Quad Cities area, and several of our leadership are back here this evening, Michael Adcock and Vivian Perry, whom several of you probably know, and Loring Cannon. And a couple of those people have met, I think, informally with a couple of members of council. What I'm here to do tonight is to sort of open a conversation that we would like to bring to a formal agenda item within the next few weeks to the council, to ask the council to adopt a resolution. And I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to describe what that resolution is. I was expecting to be watching a clock ticking down here, but it's... Ah, there we are. Okay. Thank you.
We're not going to let you off that easy.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll try to respect the council's time. I really do. The name of the organization is the North Central Arizona Chapter of Move to Amend. Move to Amend is a national grassroots movement that is trying to persuade the Congress to put forward a constitutional amendment. Sounds like a heavy lift, but this is why. The amendment is a response to a series of Supreme Court decisions culminating in 2010 with the decision in Citizens United. And what this series of decisions has done is make it increasingly clear that private for-profit corporations can spend unlimited amounts to influence elections. In the most recent election cycle here in Arizona, we probably had over $10 million spent by private corporations to try to influence the outcome, most notably on the utilities commission. And we're anticipating, not just me, but the popular media are anticipating that we can expect to see well over $2 billion spent by private corporations to influence the outcome of the 2016 elections, which we're already well wrapped up in. What this amendment would do, and I hope, I think we had copies of this proposed resolution, which I trust that the town clerk may have circulated among you all. Looks like that. It does two things, which address this problem that the Supreme Court has created. One, it says that corporations, for-profit corporations, do not by their nature have the same First Amendment rights, Fourteenth Amendment rights, Fourth Amendment rights that human beings have, that the Bill of Rights was put there for the purpose of protecting the rights of individual human beings. That's the first thing that it says. And the second thing it says is that Congress and the states do have the authority, as they've historically had, to reach in and regulate spending on public elections so that money doesn't become a corrupting influence in public elections. Historically, the Congress and the states have had that authority, and they have had the authority to treat corporations and labor unions and other corporate entities differently from human beings in making those rules. But in a series of decisions culminating, as I say, in 2010, and actually there have been a couple more since then, but the sort of the flagship case is Citizens United in 2010, the Supreme Court has made it clear that unless we, as people, step forward and amend the Constitution, that the Constitution, the way it's presently written, as interpreted by the Supreme Court, says, well, corporations do have the rights of human beings, and the Congress and the states do not have the power to regulate spending in elections. So this is the reason why this grassroots effort has grown up. And it may sound odd to bring this kind of question to a town council. And without even waiting for that question, let me just explain what we're trying to do. In order for Congress to decide that this is something they want to undertake, because if Congress, by a two-thirds vote in both chambers, puts out a constitutional amendment, then the states can ratify, three-quarters of the states, the alternative is for the states, one by one by one, to call for a constitutional convention, which is a much more open-ended process and a lot more difficult to get to. Most of the amendments that we've seen adopted in the past 100 years have come through this congressional mechanism that I'm talking about. And the Congress members aren't going to really understand that this is something they should do, 4-3-2-1, unless the people, such as in town councils, step forward and say, yes, Representative Gosar, Senator McCain, Senator Flake, this is what we want. So that's what we're going to be coming back and asking you for in a few weeks.
Russ, would you give us your phone number? Our phone number, we could re-reach it.
My phone number is unfortunately a cell phone from some other part of the country, but I'll give it to you. You want it on the air?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I can just hear the phones ringing now.
If we have any questions?
314 is the area code, 566-3386.
We'll study this and may call on you, give you a call, and if you have any more suggestions, give us a call, okay?
I greatly appreciate the council's attention to this, and I hope a couple of other municipalities in Arizona have adopted these resolutions. And it's just a good way to convey a message to our congresspeople and our senators. This is what ordinary people do want.
Good. Thank you, Russ. Any other public comments? If there be none other... Kirk, anything?
No.
Okay, you got it. Okay, well, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to number 14, which I know everyone hates, and that's the motion to adjourn. Anyone care to move it?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, anyone?
I'll second that, Mayor.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Good to see you all.